The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
I don't see any less rights that felt so orderable.
Crowner?
Here.
Rowley?
Here.
Mike Meyer?
Here.
Please, Waterman?
Here. Please perfect approve the gentleman.
So.
Sport. What was sport, any discussion? Hold on.
Rowley?
Aye.
Mike Meyer?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Mr. Perry, consent agenda. Support. Most of us support to approve consent agenda, it's only fifteen. And we'll read off because we're just gonna go over what they ought to put there. Is there any discussion? If they have any questions later. Roll call.
Mike Meyer?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
And Mr. Perry. And Orgo staff reports, I want to congratulate Kathy Andyall, winning the council seat yesterday in the election. So, looking forward, ordering to.
Entries.
Entry, well she's not here, all right. She's a holdover. Dan, you got anything?
Yeah, I got a couple things. Working on a goal setting session we have scheduled for December eleventh. You'll get a packet, read an email in the next day or two from the, it'll come from Kelly actually, but that'll have a questionnaire fill out and get back to me and it's all explained in the packet, so you'll be getting that. We got our renewal from our health insurance provider at a sixty percent increase, but we are looking for, we are looking at a different option anyway, and that looks like it's gonna come in like a five percent increase, so. We said thanks but no thanks to the first people and the new people will be here next week to talk to you about, our next meeting to talk to you about that.
What company are we talking about?
It's through EBS, but it's not really EBS, it's the IGHCP. It's a consortium of like a couple hundred governments and they've got several thousand lives so they can negotiate their prices with Walmart.
There is what I was looking for.
Yes, it'll be Walmart, yes. And I got a call today from Arlington, they're working on a road project to redo the Humpty Bumpity West Avenue. They're gonna do some grinding down on that and it didn't turn out to be a very big project, so they were wondering if maybe we were interested in doing our gear from West Avenue to the hospital or something, that's a little bit in tough shape maybe, but that two projects together to try to get some good prices and I said, well that'd hurt to ask and so figure it that way and give me some real numbers and we'll talk about it during goal setting or budget or sometime and we'll decide what we want to do, but he's gonna say he's gonna talk to his council about it, so I wanted to let you know before you hear him say that he's gonna work in with us. So you've heard about it at least once before you hear that from him.
They hook in that overlay or?
It's some diamond grinding thing, it's not tearing it all up, it's, I think it's a level and overlay kind of situation.
Do they have any? What?
No, just that the commentary sewers finally moving forward and that's where he's gonna ground on that.
Do they have any?
I didn't know whether to ask Mike or Dan really, what were we doing out on the corner of Mount Pleasant and here with a drone in the air and people putting flags? Was that us? Was we doing something on there?
I got called on that from David Bo that day that I wasn't around when that was going on and he thought it was surfers. He was gonna stop.
That was weird.
We had to drive the survey for the water tower project. They did along Mount Pleasant Street and then I found the police building. Probably the number thirty first.
Just so you know, when you're in town doing stuff, yeah. Okay, I just had a citizen ask me and wanted to know what was going on and what the flags were and why there was a drone above his house and I told him he shouldn't have been doing what he was doing, but.
Do they have anything else you'd like to ask?
A few things, October twenty-sixth we had our testing for police officers. We had twenty-one applicants that applied, we had five that showed up that day. Two passed everything and we already had the previous three that were used that they passed previous law enforcement exams this past year. And we've whittled that down to three applicants right now that are going through the background checks. We should have everything ready to go by next city council meeting where we'll be presenting two officers to go to the academy starting in January. Getting all that through the, through the program right now. That's all I have.
Do they have any?
It's a case where you think, no matter who you hire, they're gonna have to go through the?
Yes, we did not have any certified officers apply. I made it through all of them. Pretty regular, very normal background checks anyway.
And so then to answer the next question, which should come up from a taxpayer, I would think, are we doing something to protect us?
Yes.
After we pay for that kind of training and that kind of schooling, that we don't lose those people within a certain period of time?
We're looking at, currently we had a two-year contract, we're looking to extend it to a five-year contract with first two years would be a hundred percent paid back to the city.
All right, thanks.
Anything else for you guys? Sean?
I had a couple permits come in this week, so you'll be seeing a couple projects going on, one out of the college, be a solar project. That, I just had a few questions with them and they were able to answer them real quick, so we got them turned around, pre-passed. Kelly brought to my attention, we had a couple complaints of open burning going on Sunday, so she's having her at post another page on the city website, Facebook. Just wanted to remind people that it was seasonal burning. It's leaves and twigs only, can't go any grass, garden waste, three yard waste, that type of stuff, and it's only on Wednesdays and Saturdays from October fifteenth to the thirtieth of November, three daylight hours. And then you have to be attending it, wind has to be less than ten mile an hour, and if you have a burn barrel, again, it's yard waste, brush sticks, branches and shrubs, no garden waste, leaves and grass. And again, on Wednesdays and Saturdays only, which you do that year round if you have a burner or anything. So, if we're out and we see it going on on Sundays, we'll put it out.
Do they have any?
Yeah, is that house ever gonna get some of that, that yard?
Which one?
The one on, Houston, Brandy?
I'm doing a follow-up with the, the daughter of the owner, who's trying to convince the owner to give her power of attorney so we can do more action on it actually. It cleaned up a little, but nowhere near satisfactory.
It just needs to be, I mean, you got a little snow on it, a lot of, and yells.
Ideally what they wanna do, I can't go into too much detail of what they wanna do, they, they wanna clean up and then they've got some after plans for it, but I can't go into too much more than that.
It seems like it's dragging and dragging and dragging. It ought to be, well, I mean, I won't be here, but.
I'd love to be able to just go in there.
Yeah, you can't see how.
Inloader pick it all up.
Yeah. I mean, I hate to do that, you know, but it, it does, it just looks bad.
I don't disagree, I, it's, it's one of those, like I said, I'd like to be able to go in there with an inloader and pick it all up and that's in the middle for it.
Anything else for Sean? Kelly, you got any?
Yeah.
That was it. Perfect. You got any more with Kelly?
No.
Was it? All right.
I'm good, sir, thanks.
Good, thank you. All right. Well, good, all right. Little two citizen inquiries, any more wish for council matters on our, on the agenda to develop? James? New business? Annual audit report for this whole year nineteen, or eighteen-twenty. Tracy?
I have to turn you over.
You can sit down for a moment.
That's pretty routine again this year, and we have a clean audit opinion from all of your people.
Blue binders. And then as you can see on, towards the end of the report, we list the findings that we had, so. I don't know how much you want me to talk, so.
Anybody have a question about the audit report? Last three pages, should say.
Your staff, Leslie and the staff was all very helpful and kind of what we needed.
I would suggest, keep the business on, that maybe Gifford could, Mr. Dan could talk to some people. I see again, we had three employees of councilmen at the utility council. You found that. I wonder about the real, I really shouldn't happen. Well, it actually has happened to all of us, okay? And, and I suppose I can have one because Ritter moved out and I didn't catch up with him, so, but I don't, that seems a little strange to me, I guess, and maybe in, during the casel time, maybe Mr. Gifford could have an discussion with these people, whoever they might be.
One month apparently, right?
This was as of June thirtieth.
Yeah, so, but you just, you don't look through every cycle, so you randomly take one, so somebody could easily have it one time.
But this was as of June thirtieth.
Yeah.
They had.
Yeah, so.
As of your fiscal year end. So, I guess, just make sure at your end, nobody has to think what's wrong.
It's just not the first time that's been in the audit report. And that's all I'm saying, is I've seen this on here repeated year after year after year. It just seems a little strange to me.
It, it really doesn't mean that this not been paid, it just means they were late paying it and, because I don't think anybody has, you know, been shut off or anything, so.
Oh, it's old enough.
If you look at it, we had a four dollar penalty on that, so it's extra revenue.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Better pay emotionally, so. Make sure you support, any other discussion? Hold on.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Mike Meyer?
Aye.
Okay. Nice Tracy. See you next year. I have number two, is TIF planning report by Spirit Financial, and Maggie's here.
Good evening, everyone, and Maggie, with Spirit Financial, they said in front of you, your TIF handouts, and these are the colored pages, you can, if you have your binders still, you can pull the pages out of your old binders, put in the new pages. We are gonna get a couple.
New binders down to your new council people, so we'll get those sent down right away for you guys. But I'll just quickly run through and, and kind of recap what has gone on here in the city this last year. We start with our red pages where we talk about our general obligation debt. This is any general obligation debt that you have outstanding. It starts with the two thousand and eight, which was an SRF loan, that's for water improvements. We have two thousand and eleven A and a B, which are going to pay off here through your next budget cycle in fiscal year twenty-one. The twenty thirteen As, which was a very large bond for you guys, is set to pay off here in fiscal year twenty, so that you will make that final payment in June. The two thousand and sixteen lease purchase is also set to expire in twenty twenty, and then on the second page, we outline your two thousand and seventeen debt. I remind you that we give you the full amount that you borrowed, we give you the date that it was issued. The TIC is the true interest cost or the true interest rate associated, and then we give you principal and the principal and interest. We also have underlined on that two thousand and seventeen as an example, under the June first twenty twenty-four payment of five hundred and forty thousand, that's when that bond becomes callable, because we've done that underlining. So if interest rates are lower than two point three zero seven at that time, there's a possibility you could refinance that bond, otherwise if not, I would say you could pay that bond until maturity, if interest rates are higher and, and maybe you're gaining more money on your investment, or you can pay off in part or whole at that time as well. We give you the total principal and the total principal and interest. We do bring in a couple of different revenues, you can see, we bring in TIF revenue, we bring in local options, sales tax or lost revenue. There's some general fund, some sewer fund and some water fund on one of those bonds that is, is preparing to pay off, I think the lease purchase possibly. And then as you can see on the far right column, you do not levy any property taxes for debt purposes, so I think that's always very important to point that out to you. We go on to the revenue debt pages, and these are their orange pages. We do note that the city has a two thousand and eight water revenue SRF loan, and then a two thousand and seventeen sewer revenue SRF loan. The state revolving fund or the SRF program, both of those interest rates are two percent, which is a very low interest rate. You have, you have the ability at this point in time to call in the water revenue SRF loan at any time or pay ahead on it at any time. The two thousand and seventeen technically will become callable after you make the June first twenty twenty-eight payment, and so you'll just go ahead and make your payments till then. We do show that you bring in water revenue and sewer revenue to pay those debts in full, and you do not levy any property taxes for those debts. Those debts are based on revenues, they do not count against your debt capacity, and by resolution you are to raise or keep the rates in the water and sewer system sufficient enough to pay those two debts. The city still has the two rebate obligations outstanding on the purple pages. This is for the campus community developers, not only Millennial, Millennium Hall, but also Blackhawk Tower. We've got them sitting in there at what the rebates were calculated for twenty twenty and what we estimate those rebate abouts to be in twenty-one and beyond. We do note that both of them are annual appropriation, which means you only have to count the amount that you rebate to the developer in that year against your debt capacity, which is very, very important, because these are large rebate agreements. If that appropriation was not in there, you would have to count the full amount that you anticipate to rebate back to the developer every single year in that full aggregate amount, so. We do have those, there were no new additional rebate agreements this year. The yellow pages are where we, we think back to our red pages and what we are going to certify to the TIF district off of those red pages. So off of the general obligation debt, what is going to be paid with TIF revenues? A portion or all of your two thousand and thirteen debt is being paid with TIF revenues. Also, we show that your two thousand and seventeen debt is being paid with TIF revenues in full as well. And so, right there is where we outline what those amounts are. We bring that in then, we, that with that tall column, we then show Leslie and Dan what monies they're gonna be asking for and bringing in in TIF revenues to pay the debt service, again, so there's no impact on the property tax levy. You do have some interfund loans, and we double check these loan amounts and these repayments with Leslie every year and go through some number crunching based on what's been paid back, what needs to be withheld. A couple of those are for low to moderate income, and again, those are on residential redevelopments on page two, and you have low to moderate income sub-fund loans, which means you do have to collect on anything that you've done from a residential standpoint and provided TIF revenues, you do have to collect low to moderate income if those are at-market rate homes or housing developments. So we, we certify that. We bring in from those purple pages, the amount of financing rebate agreements that you're gonna also need to ask for, and that very large column then at the end of page two shows us how many dollars you need to be certifying to the TIF district by December first of twenty nineteen. Now, based on what Leslie may have in the TIF fund, she may round that number up, just because we always say there potentially is someone in your TIF district who does not pay their taxes, and if they do not pay their taxes, you very well could be shorted a little bit if their valuation was arranged by the county to be put into your askings. So it's always important that if you do not have a, a fund balance of, of, you know, of a, of a certain amount, then you definitely should maybe round that asking up, so. We go on for a couple more sections. The general obligation, which is our green section, we're gonna look at column number two, and this talks about your debt capacity of the city. So the city's one hundred percent value was two hundred and ninety-five million. You can see that grew by seven point two eight seven percent, just a very, very healthy growth rate in a one-year period. Five percent of that is your debt capacity in that, so that gives you a debt capacity of fourteen million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand. You have general obligation principal amounts outstanding of five million, one hundred and fifty thousand. You also have outstanding those rebate agreements in the annually appropriated amount for twenty of eighty thousand, five fifty. You will pay back one thousand, eighty-one dollars in principal this year against those general obligation bonds, and you will also pay those annually appropriated rebates of eighty thousand, five fifty. So that leaves you with a remaining debt capacity of ten million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, or approximately seventy-two point five percent of what you have available. We do figure.
I think, I think you meant to say one million, eighty-one thousand.
Yeah.
Seven, one thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The bomb.
One, yeah, you're paying back one million, eighty-one thousand dollars. I apologize. Thank you for catching that, I apologize, yes. So that does leave you ten million, seven hundred. Leaves you set ten million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of remaining debt capacity. Now, we always tell you that you should never issue more than eighty percent of what your debt capacity would be. I don't think that you're in a situation that you plan to do that or even get up to that number, but if we deducted off that twenty percent right off the top number, we deduct off about two point nine million. That leaves you then with seven million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of remaining debt capacity. Again, that's just a, that's a safety feature that we build into that, saying that, you know, we don't want you to get into a situation where you've borrowed too many dollars and you have no availability to borrow anything else in case of an unplanned emergency comes up for borrowing. Again, we built this growth rate at just two percent. The city has fluctuated on growth before, sometimes it's, it's a very high growth like this year, sometimes it can be a little flatter growth at one or two percent, so to be conservative, we've built in a two percent growth rate across the two pages, and as you can see, if you do nothing else, by column number ten, you will be out of debt and out of rebate agreements, so, something to think about. And then the very last section of our TIF report is your actual part where we talk about the incremental value in your TIF district. So I remind everybody that this table is our TIF district and our base value. Anything that grows over and above that table is increment, and these are the incremental numbers that we're talking about in this blue section. So we look at column number two and read straight down, in your TIF district, you have commercial increment of ninety-five million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That did grow significantly over last year, so you've had some significant commercial growth in that TIF area. You also have industrial growth of about six million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand. You have personal property and ag of about nine hundred and twenty thousand, that could just be ag land that is sitting in the city limits in the TIF district that's maybe grown in valuation. And then you've got commercial, or I'm sorry, residential property of fifty-four million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand. You will notice that we use rollbacks on all of these numbers to get to a taxable value, and then the multi-residential, remember, is three property, or two properties or more or two pieces in one parcel or more, like an apartment building, condominium complex, that is six million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, so I want to point out, you did also grow from column one to two in residential and multi-residential as well. If we roll all of that back, that gives us a total property taxable valuation of one hundred and twenty-three million, five hundred and fifty thousand. If we take that times the TIF tax rate, not the total tax rate, but the TIF tax rate, that protects debt service levies, Pebble, school instructional, we get, that rate is twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents, that produces three million, five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of receipts. You are using in fiscal year twenty, a million, seventy-two thousand for debt purposes, for general obligation debt. You are also using about eighty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for TIF rebate obligations, and you are using sixty thousand, four hundred and eight dollars for some of those interfund or sub-fund obligations that you have outstanding. That gives you unclaimed TIF dollars of two million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. As I always say, that's not saying go out and claim two million, because if you do that, you will severely hurt your general fund and the ability of what you can levy in the general fund. Now, interesting thing, the TIF district, your, your one hundred percent valuation grew, your, by seven percent, your TIF district grew by one point four four percent. So although there was growth in the TIF district, it's just basically telling you that some of that growth probably because of taxable rollbacks, and again, the severity of the multi-residential rollback gets a little bit more severe every year, you're just not seeing as much growth in taxable valuation in that TIF district as, as maybe just in the one hundred percent value of the city, so. I would answer any questions that you have on this report, clear as mud, right?
Very good report, as always.
It looks good, you guys are a healthy city, so.
That's what I was looking to ask you, to give, ask your opinion.
Yes.
Since you do several of these.
I do.
What's your opinion of what we're writing?
Yeah, so going back to that debt capacity number of seven, seven point two million dollars of remaining debt capacity, or about, or I'm sorry, remaining debt capacity of about seventy-two percent of your remaining debt capacity, that's an extremely healthy number for the size community that you are.
Normally we hear that number reverse.
Correct.
We have, the city's at such, such debt capacity, you kind of reverse that number. When I first looked at it, there's a way where it's seventy-two percent, we're really more at twenty, thirty percent.
Yeah, correct. You, you're borrowed at about twenty-eight, thirty percent of your capacity, so you have remaining seventy-two percent.
We only hear it at the same age the other way around.
That's right, that's a very healthy number for a community your size, and for the, for the amount of debt that you do, because you do have, you know, approximately five million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of outstanding debt, and when you do borrow debt, it's, they're in fairly large amounts, three point seven million, three point eight million. We all know projects have just continued to get a little bit more costly, but I think the city does a good job of planning, and, and we're always happy to hear, you know, strategizing sessions and planning sessions, to plan for those debt obligations, and it, it's not every year that the city goes out and borrows debt, it's putting it on a plan and saying, you know, every two or three years. The, when we issued the twenty seventeen debt, we issued it, and as you, if you look back on principal from the, from the prior year to this year, we issued it making small principal payments until the twenty thirteen debt pays off, which is this year, and then we make very large payments. So we sort of wrapped some existing debt around the new debt, and, and we were able to do that and get, again, alleviate no, no debt service levy, keep those paid with TIF dollars because they were TIF projects, things like that, so I think you guys do a very good job of planning.
That's what I was looking for.
Yes.
Leslie, you remember, one time we got literally hot, it was when we built a new swimming pool, because you got nervous. I remember, I remember back, but I don't remember the number.
I think it was eighty, I think it was about eighty. We had completely flipped from where we are now.
Yeah, and that was when we built the new swimming pool, and we all know it, those of us that were here, I mean, we all knew we was gonna do that and set up payments to instantly crash it, but I think it was around eight. But I think it was around 80 something percent.
You also do a nice job, I should point out, you do a nice job of keeping your debt short. That's very, very important. The debt that you have outstanding, at least for the general obligation debt, is paid off in about 10 years from the date that you issued it. That's very important when looking at that. Now, from the revenue side, it's 2% from the SRF whether you go 10 years or 20 years. So, we tell you, just take the 20 years. If you want to pay it off early, go ahead and do that. But that is a strain on your, on your revenues and expenses of the utility system. So, it's better to just take the 20 years. We also would hope that the improvements that you're making in water and sewer are going to last 20 years, so.
At least.
At least.
Hey, I have this question, so. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much for having me.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, we were at 3.08% in 2017.
I thought it was really, I was thinking it was up there in the 90s somewhere.
Item number three is considered change order one and number two from Four Seasons X-Bay for the agency of sewer repair. Change order one is for $20,700, and change order two is for $8,437, $8,437. Maybe it'd be the... Just one, most support discussion. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion to carry it. You guys had a chance to look at the project of all.
Agency Sewer, yeah. We've been down a few times. Poor soil conditions and issues with boring. Once they did that, both on the main and services, it seemed like they didn't have a hard time. Get my slope straight, so. That's the biggest issue down, but the end results.
I like that.
I seen that.
Pretty stressed with this whole thing.
How long have you had it?
Everybody's scratching their head almost like.
But we are.
Hopefully it's done.
You don't have to be nice to say.
All right. Item number four is considered agreement, so it's been various services related to the following projects, which are the 2019 West Agent Sewer Road Sewer Improvements, $12,060. Facility plant with the station replacements, $4,680. And Lewis Park Resource Restoration Project, $7,800, $0.02.
Show the movie, B.C.
Or most support, any discussion? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Carry. Item number five is considered resolution appointing outstanding maintenance coordinator and public works department. Motion to approve, or most support, any discussion?
Basically your old job, I think?
Yes. Roll call.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rawlins.
Aye.
Carry. Item number six is considered resolution charging economic development agreement with ADB, which in essence, ADB is General Electric or the purchase of electric. We had a development agreement with them, and they no longer are needing it, I guess. So, they're going to repay us.
They have to.
They have to repay them already, which is they did since, I guess. Motion to approve, support, most support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Carry. Item number seven is considered full-fledged equipment to repair its street sweepers in $5,436. Motion to approve. One more second.
Support.
Most support, any discussion? Does this make it through till we get a new one? Will it? Will this, will this repair make it through till we get a new one?
I'm not promising anything. It's running all day long with leaves and, like I said, the environment that it's in and the age of... We've been told several times, this is huge way past, as they said, if he leave it, it'll operate.
That was great.
And I consider that, a lot of that's already ran over the constable portion, missing and increasing, saying all the time, it must make last. But we buy that.
You can say I was here, but I just have got it.
But please get care of that.
Carry, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion to carry. I don't know what you do next time.
I wouldn't, I would finish that. In fact, I'll take it.
Motion to, motion to... Consider resolution adding Christopher Easton to the role of department. Out motion, second. With the second, any discussion?
Well.
First of all, thank you for wanting to be a volunteer. We need to be one.
And you get to put up with that guy when they're at it.
Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Just pointing at the mirror by the way that I mean.
Welcome board, Chris.
The only reason why I had disagreements is because I was a coach for several years and he was an official. But he didn't play for me, so it wasn't right when he called that technical foul on me.
I should have gave him Lord One.
The old.
Oh, wait a minute. He called it technical foul, you know?
But I had books to do that. He never did give me a real test.
Okay.
Motion, carry. Item number nine is considered through reading ordinance, many provisions pertaining to conflict of interest. Motion to approve. Support. Motion to support, any discussion? Never heard any IAs.
No.
Okay. Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Item number 10 is considered through reading ordinance, many provisions pertaining to solid waste control. Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussions? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Item number 11 is considered through reading ordinance, many provisions pertaining to operating budget preparation. Motion to approve, support. Most support, any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Carry. Item number 12 is considered requested central angle installed for 31 feet of fiber optic of West Houston. It's basically running about 400 feet from Aspen Domo and building high, and we always forget the name of the...
Some.
Support.
Most support, any discussion? I do want to mention though that it's not active Public Works Director Mike Riss. That's a bunch of guy.
Oh, sorry. He's still not meeting.
All right. Roll call.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Item number 13 is the considered replacement of 10 DVD weapons with replaced parts. And I think right now, I don't know, I'm trying to pull this off. $4,662.20 there. And we've gone from 45 to 9 millimeters.
That's correct.
Jesse, is there a reason why we're not getting everything of the things that's on it?
I was just, was the different options that the officers had with them. And two, I think there's two of them that wanted the red, the red ammo gun on the end of the site. And then the other ones are what Block had already for night sights on them.
They're all night sights. They're going to be there with the metal lighter, well, the block version of the metal lighter gun. But the ammo is actually a red tritium, so they are on night sights.
Okay.
And there's some flash, flashlight about, so.
Yeah, yes.
Got a motion to give support, part, most support, discussion.
Jesse, talk about the donation money you had.
The donation money was the previous from the rifle and shotguns that we received to, that paid for all the rifles and all the shotguns that we had previously budgeted in our budget for this year. These were not in the budget, but speaking with the block representative and the block themselves is stating that I did not realize that it's been 13 years that we had these weapons. So, we went ahead and just put in this year's budget, giving officers buying all that. What the next point is about ammo practice and also.
And so we are trading in 10 of the old ones if they would like?
Yes, yes. Or the officers would buy that back if they would like to.
At that same cost, at 295.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Carry. So, item number 14, all of those new guns, we can buy ammunition for, discuss, $3,536. Support. Got a motion?
Did you have?
Support.
Yes.
Support. Any discussion? What are we going to do with the old 45s and stuff?
I was going to ask.
Item, we have approximately about 800 practice rounds of the 45 downstairs. So, we would just keep that on hand with the officer buying, the officers that would like to buy their old ammo back or their old weapon back. And since we have to qualify with our off-duty weapons every year, all of our duty, we'll just, we provide that for our off-duty officer to have ammunition for our officer. So, we'll just keep it on hand.
So, that ammo will be sold at the price of legal whatever?
To the officers?
Yeah.
No, we just provide that for the officers to qualify with their off-duty weapons that they carry with them.
So, I'd be carrying 45s, that's off duty.
If they would like to, yeah, if they would like to, it just... It pretty much goes back to when Gary Walters was chief and I was firearms inspector again. As always stated as a policy of the police department, you qualify with any of your off-duty weapons. And the department's always paid for that ammo, be it 9-millimeter, 40, 45, 38. So, it's those, what do you say, 800 rounds will be used throughout the next couple of years as those officers qualify with their off-duty weapons and they choose to buy those 45s back.
And nobody buys any of that, and we can, so.
You could, I still qualify with my off-duty 45s.
I think it's more than just you.
Yeah, it's more than just being the reserve, the color reserves.
We have 45s off duty, so.
There's a few reserves of 245s, so.
It'll, it'll get used up. I mean, if we had several thousand rounds, we'd look at sell it back to the company. But would it be under 1,000 cases are appropriate, use order, just using ourselves. And it just shows that, as you can see, it's $176 a case for practice for 9-millimeter, and it's $300 per case of 1,000 rounds for 45s. So, you're looking at, you know, $124 savings per case on just a DVD ammo, so.
That's about 45s, 30 cents of rounds, compared to 17 cents, around for a, for a 9-millimeter, so.
So, if I become a reiterer like that ammo?
Yes.
Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Item number 15 is considering engineering service agreement Snyder for engineering services related to Monica and Landfill, let the station force me a product, about $9,000. Motion to approve. Support. Most support, any discussion? I will say that this is all going to be reversed against the Landville. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Haymeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Miami Old Business, anyone wishing rest council, ready, discuss, any discussion? Any motion to approve? Some of the, all in favor?
Aye.
Any means of...